If you guys don't mind, I'll phone the airport engineer for the end. Give us some time to talk about that one. The third item was the Green Valley Drive update. The bid opening was on the second of June. There was only one bid that came in and it was above what the estimate was, but it was within ten percent of the estimate. So, print it out on each of your handouts what the difference is. The engineer estimate was a little over two hundred forty-three thousand. Contractor's estimate came in at two hundred fifty-five thousand. That was law estimate. Basically, when Sue got that information back, she needed to know whether or not we still wanted to receive this. So, I wanted to present that to you guys, make you aware of the fact that it was a little bit higher, but down. Further, it's forty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents.
That includes the twenty-one thousand?
So, if the green money doesn't go proportion.
No, that green money has.
The green money was the settlement amount. It was, what, he was engineer. Was our engineer?
Can we just do one estimate for the contractor?
Yeah, that's what we based on. The contractors, they run on.
But we only use one contractor, we don't get more than one bid?
Well.
Normally.
Normally, yeah, but given the timeframe of this project, I guess contractors are busy. Law actually, according to Scott, he turned it in, literally at the last minute because he had to call back to confirm whether or not they wanted to do this project. So, apparently they're busy.
So, we almost had this project and no bids on it. Wow.
It's going to be ripping out the curbs on either side of Green Valley Drive, replacing them with new ones and then repaving the entire route. And then putting some storm sewers in, some along the line. So, there's gonna be, I can't remember exactly, but I think five or six storm sewers. Either replaced or maybe installed. And we do asphalt, we do curbing gutter and then we're gonna tie up any sidewalk close to the intersection of Irving Lake. I think so's AKA compliant and that, we have to place it across the road. Is there any other problem?
What's on the other side?
It's just two sidewalks, the dead end right now.
Ah, okay.
But that's, that's making supply, so they can go down toward that storm or whatever.
How long do we have for this grant?
We have to be under the season. The idea is to get the contract signed and everything, get work in June, early July and get the project done hopefully by the time it starts.
How much was it to do a little bit of debt?
Three hundred something thousand.
Bob said it.
It was three hundred and some thousand. Took two years worth of money.
How many people is that total? Reason that question, I'm wondering if it's worth it.
We got a grant, we got free money.
Take, take the free money.
Ninety-nine households. And seventy people live up there.
There'll be taxpayers out there. I'm curious, when they break down the estimates, the details for the engineering side and contractor's side, did they provide details of how much for certain paths? Curious where the over gives.
They want it tied up in the MOT for the maintenance of traffic and maintaining access to the driveways.
So, the engineer under estimated that versus laws, that's a lot of the.
Law had twenty-five thousand, not that many. And we have to maintain access to the park, the narrow road, or the narrow roadway dead end. They really don't have any.
No access.
Just confined workspace.
Did, did you have the money appropriated somewhere this year for that forty-eight thousand or something?
Well, we weren't anticipating that much, capital improvements, but yeah, I mean, this was on the, this was on the radar for us. And it's always a guessment until you get your bids in.
How you feel about that? I know you wish it was below the estimate or at, but you still want to see.
Obviously, I wish it was at or below the estimate, but. You know, I think the first summer that I became mayor is when I saw the condition of Green Valley Drive. I mean, it needed, it needed major help back then. The drainage or lack of drainage was causing mosquito issues. I remember one particular place there, should come around the bend, we tried to do something there, a street crew tried to do something there, I think to help the situation somewhat, but. I mean, the, the street's crumbling and the curbs are too and. There are a number of people that live on this street. A lot of them probably aren't taxpayers as it relates to payroll income tax. But, what are we gonna do? I mean, and, and, and we now, we got an opportunity here to get a hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. In grant money that's specifically targeted for areas like this.
Target, two hundred sixteen jobs.
Oh, thanks, yeah, because of the formula money. So, okay, so if we fail to perform, guess what happens the next time? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just truth, so.
You turn a low mod income area into a light area, you just continue.
Gets worse and worse.
Yeah. So, you know, I, in my opinion, we do it. And that's the last time it gets done in any of our professional lives dealing with the city of Heath. Because I don't think it's been done since it was first put in. So, I, that's, that's my take.
The, the condition of the road was definitely beyond.
And even though there might be people that are there not, like we say, taxpayers, people don't own buildings, you're paying property tax on them.
I didn't say, but that's what I thought, we just helped them invest.
But we need to legislate the question.
No, we don't need anything, I just wanted to bring your attention, just make sure everyone was on board.
Did we eliminate any ingress egresses up through there, through this project or they all still? Do you like, there's a ton of curb cuts.
I think they're all still maintained.
We didn't go past the back of the curb.
We didn't.
We didn't want to get in on that.
That's because you got, I mean, you got a lot of duplexes that each have their own driveways, you got.
Ton of curb cuts.
Yeah, yeah.
That's our, that's our responsibility, I feel, is once it leaves past the curb on up into where the building is.
Oh, yeah, Jeff was asking if we were reducing the number of curb cuts in this, no.
That's what it is. Can't kick a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars in the teeth, that's for sure.
I just have one, so you know. Everybody's still on board with that? Next two are just updates for you guys. The Hopewell Drive plans, Jokes has submitted the updated information to ODOT for incorporation into view. And then Bob, Chris and I are just gonna review those ourselves, make sure everything is kosher. Any signage or placement of signage along the roadway, whether or not street signs being replaced, that's been done already. Trying to get those little things wrapped up in one project that wants to. Need anything else, so that's just kind of where we stand right now. That sale date is gonna be in October of this year, so the actual construction of it will be in spring next year.
Eddie, do you recall what the city's contribution to that project is going to be? Ballpark off the top of your head?
Actually, the whole paving now, I don't think we got OPWC one dollar.
That's right.
Two hundred ten thousand five hundred, I think, or something like that. It's been a lot done for a little.
Doing that, what they're stating for after.
Yeah, our match we got from OPWC. As long as the bids come in as expected.
If it goes above that.
Here we go again. Oil at forty-eight bucks a barrel.
There we go.
Price of asphalt keeps going up.
You know, I, I think part of it too, and, and, and this is something. I, 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 I don't know Eddie, whether or not this is something that we could have controlled or something that is beyond our control. To go out to bid in May for a project, you know, still in that calendar year, that's challenging. These contractors already have their work schedules lined up. You know, it, it's not as though the vast majority of them aren't begging for work now as it is. And they've already got their schedules lined up. Now, I know with the grant money involved and stuff like that, there's windows of where you gotta apply for it, there's windows of when you gotta use it. And I don't know that, that, that timing could have been helped in any way at all, but. I would, I'm gonna make a guess and say that the bids for the Hopewell Drive project will have more and they will be more competitive. Because we're going out to bid in the fall for a project that's not gonna take place until the next year. So, to the extent that we are able to control the timing of bids and performances, keep in the forefront of your mind. Trying to do that to our advantage.
And that, the Hopewell Drive paving will actually be incorporated to ODOT's larger same route for the Heath project. So, we're, we'll probably get a cut on that financial stuff.
Now, that is not, that doesn't have anything to do with the Hopewell thirteen intersection project. What's the timeframe on that?
Project ODOT will begin in ODOT's nineteen calendar year, so July of eighteen.
When you say begin, what does that mean?
It'll begin in their calendar year, which would be July thirteen, or July of the calendar year.
Oh, okay.
And then they're six months behind.
Okay.
And their nineteen calendar year will end in June of nineteen.
So, at the time it begins, the engineering will be done, but it won't have gone out to bid yet, right? Okay, so a project of that scale, again, could be a fall bid, spring performance.
Yeah, that project, we have some flexibility with it because we've had so much time from when we started the project to when we're on the ground. We have a lot of things here.
And then the other ODOT related project that I'm aware of is paving of seventy-nine, south of Andover Overland. Refresh my memory, how far south are we going?
First stretch is going to be south of Kaiser.
Okay.
And everything's south of Kaiser.
Okay.
Second stretch will be Andover, all the way down to Kaiser.
Okay.
That one will be micro resurfacing, we'll just be doing the surface course.
The second one?
The first one, south of Kaiser.
Yeah, because that's not in bad shape.
Yeah, that'll just be micro resurfacing. This section will be ample milling.
Milling, yeah. What are the timings on those?
That one's supposed to be ODOT's seventeen calendar year. That one's being canceled in twenty-eighteen. So, the next team will.
Okay, so ODOT's seventeen, that means summer sixteen to summer seventeen. So, that means they're getting on that. Do we have twenty percent match on that?
Say we have. I can't remember.
So. Were we getting OPWC or OCATs or who's, who's helping us out with that?
That's actually the agenda, I think, we just have that twenty percent match.
Where we go, if we go for OPWC, we don't wanna do it on the, on the micro paving, we wanna do it on this one. Which would be the next year.
And that's eighteen, nineteen?
No, seventeen, eighteen.
Seventeen, eight.
Yeah, which we've already, we've already looked at as, as how to apply for that.
We haven't applied for that for a while.
The Hopewell Drive project will be the first one that we've gotten from OPWC in what, probably at least a couple of years.
The greatest of the last.
Oh, yeah.
Five years ago?
Then I know John Geller got one a little while ago.
Yeah. Which to them, there's no difference, but.
So, we're due. We should prioritize.
Thanks for, I just wanted to, in my head, try to, yeah, it's different pieces and parts and putting them in the calendar, it's, it's.
I guess it got a thing, I think. The last item is just an update on that drainage ditch on thirteen. Scott got me the bid specs today and he sent them out to three contractors. One of them, oh, two of them, one was law, one was late, and there was a third contractor that he sent it out to, but I think the line disappeared. He invited them to get bids to us by twenty-four. The next Friday to come in.
Thanks for it. Yeah.
So, they'll have those numbers to us by next Friday. We're gonna have a meeting out there on the sixty, this third day. If you go over any questions, all three of them are gonna meet us at once on site. If anyone has any questions, we give them answers, that way everybody's on the same page.
The time is out, Eddie.
They went ahead and did a two-page specification. First page just shows the alignment, what's going where, kind of a plan here. And the second page had a couple of notes on the identified materials, that's.
The charges for those space.
Uh, six hundred and fifty dollars, that's.
Six hundred dollars? That's what I expected.
Uh, taking consideration if it's gravel or if it's paved or if it's whatever. Okay.
If it's gravel or if it's paved or if it's whatever.
And then, last item, which I don't have two of these, but I'll pass them around, you can look at, I'll reference that amount up there, but. Mayor and I were approached a couple of weeks ago by Terry Trenton. The president of the.
He might be.
Associated with the airport.
The airport board.
Yeah. He's wanting to know if the city can grant the airport easement across the Shea House property. Paper, but down here towards the southern end, what they're trying to do is basically. Make sure or establish an area on either side of the runway where no buildings will be built and no future construction of anything will be built. So, they're just trying to get that swath through here, parallel to the center line of the runway. And the easement, I believe, would just be something where it says there won't be any buildings planned.
Yes, no build.
So, we still have use of, what's that? We still have use of it for the contention purposes. We'd have to look in to see, see how much of that acreage we actually need for contention of stormwater, but. We still have use for it for anything like that, it's just no structure.
Boy, isn't there a law we can't, that people can't build certain height?
Yeah, you can build anything that penetrates.
Why do we need to give him an easement if there's already cover?
Buffer there, should be a buffer there, right?
The, the conical zone, that was established by the FAA, restricts building height in these areas. But, I mean, if somebody came in here and wanted to build up to that conical zone, good technical.
Like the gas station that was at the end of the runway. It wasn't inside the conical zone, but it was certainly less than ideal to have a gas station at the Andover runway. So, that's, that's the idea, is the airport has, the airport has had on its long-term plan, Terry said, the, the, the concept. Of securing some space around the one, the runway to ensure that nothing could be built.
Why don't they buy it? Are we gonna give them a property? If it's something that we can sell and actually develop in the future, we're just gonna give it to them. I'm not, I'm not seeing it, but somebody can explain it to me, I can see it in your face anyways, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, the area that he's talking about. Yeah, yeah, you just can't build anything on it, is what they're asking for.
What I mean, I mean, so if we wanted to make a parking lot eventually there or something like that or.
Okay, so what you're looking at is like right here. Eddie, this is flood zone, right?
Well, it's changed since then, but it actually wraps around the east side of earlier house.
This way, is that right, do they channel down this ditch here?
Yeah, okay, is this piece here?
Right here? Yeah. Which, trying to think where the fence line is right now.
Some of that.
It goes right there. So, I, I guess the fence line goes this way. Yeah, so it would be, it'd be right here, basically. Ah, I looked at it. I don't know, I guess I didn't.
Does that mean that we, we expand Central Parkway on the south side of that stretch?
On the south side of what stretch?
Of the extension of Central Parkway. Will this allow us to have any kind of development whatsoever? And on the south, south curve, limited development? We're not helping develop, you talk about here, I mean, is there, is this off limits for any kind of development futuristically for all this property? How far does this easement go?
How far out?
Our portion of the easement is only this stretch, they have it delineated on there.
What's the green two acres there?
The green is Van Vori's property, not ours.
I think he's dealing with.
Eddie, how far above? From the air, for the runway, how far up do they want the whole thing to be?
It says, you know, how many hundred feet?
The green is Van Vori's property.
Could kind of.
Portion.
Slap a line across there. Does it say on the other sheets? Cause the other sheets they show. If you can get an idea, was it, you know, a hundred feet, two hundred, three hundred, whatever?
They're trying to go four hundred feet off the center line.
Off the center line of the runway?
What's the scale of that drawing that's on the wall there, what's, I can't see. We have the right hand corner with the scale, what's the scale?
Three hundred is, I'll be right there, seven and a third of that. I'll be up, probably up to where the third is.
Is it almost that property line going through there, shit, is that like a property line?
I can assure you, if he's talking to Steve Lehman, trying to work out a deal, he's not gonna put himself against the wall where he can't develop this property now. It's gonna be profitable.
From day one in the discussion of the development of that property, Steve has always said there really isn't anything that you can build south of the roadway. Because, because of that runway.
Just so it doesn't interfere with the, the road, that road.
Ah, that, yeah.
I know we're not even talking about this now, but I mean, if, if that's the case, we almost need to rethink the road and move the road up, so we actually have the benefit.
That's conceptual anyway.
Okay, exactly, you want benefit of something on the coastsides of the road, I mean, real estate.
The problem is, is this is all owned by Marathon, so I think that's what kind of kicked in down here. Cause he has to get across Marathon's property and force the airport too. He's working on that.
Do we need something in the airport?
Eddie, was there any easement for the airport this way?
What can we give the airport for this?
The only thing that I could think of. I wonder what the airport has. I wonder what the airport has in this area. As it relates to a future rerouting of Irvingwick. Yeah, because if we reroute Irvingwick, we'll take it this way and then, right, that's what we'll do. If we were ever, if we were ever rerouted, that's what we would do. In the short term, we're gonna take it like that. Not to the airport, no.
That's all Steve's working on.
Yeah. That's the only thing I can think of that the airport has that would be of value potentially to us is on the west side of the runway.
I think they'd love for us to move the road, because if we move the road, then it allows them to expand their runway a little bit if they want, even if it was twenty foot, thirty foot, that's huge for you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd think they'd gladly hand us that.
Yeah. Well, we'd have to ask. We'd have to ask.
Doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt to ask.
What did Steve?
Eddie, this, Eddie, this week, why don't we take a look at the, the cluster of property owners right there and see what the airport has? I think the port authority has some of that ground around in there too. I think so. We'll take a look at it and see if it makes sense, something, you know, for us to potentially use down the road. We can bring that up with them.
Building two or something closer to the runway.
Yeah.
Four hundred feet.
Yeah. Yeah, it's less than ideal. Hangar.
Would be nice to have some hangers on the other side. Here, some kind of. It's airport.
They, that. That airport. They, that, that airport, that runway will never achieve much in the way of economic development potential for us. Because they can't, they can't reclassify that place for...
Not even with a very insubordinate, small...
You can't, you can't move the hills that are to the east or River Oaks.
Prime ground.
You wanna speed the traffic alone.
So, we can't realize any economic...
Clusters of others.
I'd rather have the, not have a lot of ingress, egress off, so you can zip from Thornwood to, to the shopping area. You know what I mean?
You know, Tim, I think you bring up a great point. When you look at this, this is just the, putting on a real estate hat that I don't even... But you figure with the new interchange, with a, an improved Thornwood Drive, this area here is gonna be developable. Especially this is rail-served right here. Now, as you come across this way, you could maybe eventually see some commercial development here. But I think Tim's right, as you get through here, it gets real hard to vision much in the way of commercial retail development. You're always gonna have the runway, you're always gonna have those build restrictions. And so, that's gonna limit anything that you do in this southern part. I mean, they're seeking an easement, but really, for all intent purposes, nothing's gonna get built here, anyway. They're just, what the airport basically is wanting to do is just formalize that concept by having the no-bill easement. But to the north of it, you know, this is Ashland oil property here. It's not always gonna be under EPA mitigation. And in a lot of cases, you can still build on it, you can't just dig into it, if you're gonna build something. This rail line, you know, continues to go on up here. This big swath of land right here is gonna become about a fifty-some acre rail-served industrial site, in my opinion. So, maybe, as Tim said, someday we end up having a road that comes up this way that accesses that site for either one mega user or maybe to give access to a couple and do kinda like what we did with International Drive, all right? This area here is where you're gonna see your, your retail commercial development, I think. Over on this side, to the east of, to the east of this Ashland-owned property. I mean, there's no doubt, this is gonna be a, this is gonna be a multi-use development. You know, you're talking about three hundred acres here, you're not gonna have just one thing in three hundred acres. Then, add on this, which is another sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy acres, right here. This is not just gonna be one thing, this is gonna be multiple uses. And I think, Tim, you make a good point. It may be to our advantage to not have many, uh, access off of here. Because this could become like Hopewell Drive or Irvingwick West, where you can go fifty miles an hour through here.
Mark, do you think that that one area right there could be residential area in that regular, right, you have that area right there?
In here?
Residential?
Oh, here, no, 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 no. Not because of, 'cause of the environmental.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna...
No, I just...
Get used to it, you could walk out there, make a good prep, and come back and ride it later.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, I, I, I think, I mean, and I, I overheard what you were saying, Tim, and I think it's a great point, you know? The, the idea of not much to the south of being that, that could be, that could actually be a blessing. 'Cause that's gonna be a pretty fairly long stretch of road. And if you can open it up to fifty miles an hour, that just gets people through that stretch quicker.
That, the property that's south of the majority of the property is south of that straightaway is actually owned by forty, thirty employees, so they would develop it unless they want to. Which I'll have their plans due, they're trying to ease it, get a buffer or something.
Yeah, and I was telling Jeff, this, 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 this runway will never, this runway will never really reach the point of economic development viability that, that it would have a major impact. Because, first of all, the runway's gotta be at least five thousand feet long, which this runway's about forty-seven hundred feet long. Now, you could possibly extend it to the west and maybe even a little bit to the east and get to five thousand feet. But in order to have it used year-round for the type of commercial use that would be of economic, you know, impact, you've gotta have the, the airport itself reclassified, you have to have its operation reclassified. And that cone of airspace clearance that we're talking about, all of a sudden, that is like this, in order to get it reclassified, it goes like this. And to the east, the Hampton Inn would be in that cone. To the east, the hills and the homes in River Oaks are gonna be in that cone. It's just not, it's just not gonna happen. Even if the runway was five thousand feet. Eddie, let's take a look at that this week. See maybe if there's not something that... Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think over the years, the city's been a good partner with the airport, the airport's been a good partner with the city, but if there's something tangible that we can get out of it.
You know if we got anything out of vacating like that?
Didn't get anything.
Walk away somewhere.
Just didn't have to maintain it anymore, I guess that was our get.
We lost more than anybody, we give up about ten properties, taxed.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
'Cause I was here through all that, it was sad, because a lot of people lived there all their lives, you know? Yeah. We didn't wanna do it, I, especially me, I've got the full board of council, we didn't wanna do it, we had no choice. The feds, they're gonna be a big footprint, to stop us out. And the feds used our, their big footprints, stopped us out. But Mark, on the, I was talking to someone and they said at one time, you know, they could move the runway like it's sitting now, include it this way and take, uh, here on Heath, you know, Irvingwick, move it, it gets close to that end, move it down closer to that, to our line there, you know? And extend it to get commercial in there, but still...
I think what the airport would like to see someday happen is a cul-de-sac Heath Road, right here. And you reroute Irvingwick to the south, like that. And that would give them the ability to stretch out a little bit farther. But again, there's a, there's, there's, there's runway length and then there's operation classification. And it's that classification that the airport will never get because of what's to the east. And probably too...
But they're using the old aircraft capabilities, the new aircraft capabilities with the development of... That wasn't, uh...
When the airport was made.
Like in Washington, they keep doing away with it because when you take off, you've gotta go from zero to five thousand and so many miles. And here, and a lot of your major runways, they have forever, you know, to go out there. But in Atlanta, they don't have. And, and they keep saying, you know, that the capability of aircraft has changed. And they're injecting more air and getting the, and the props back in it, and they can get a zero lift, change something.
They can get up higher quicker?
Yeah.
Yeah. To send the reducing requirements of pre-aerospace.
I just got a letter...
Maybe the FAA will do that someday, I don't know.
I got a letter this week from a gentleman in Atlanta that's been flying for many, many years. And he's talking about the same thing, you know? You know, we went through the industrial revolution in this country. And now, then, we're in tech, I texted, uh...
Revolution.
Revolution. And it's, we don't know, nobody knows what's gonna happen at the end of that term. 'Cause they just completed, you know, aircraft going all the way around the world, I think.
Solar.
Solar powered aircraft. It's amazing, some of the things that comes out, you know, jet propulsion, towards, you know, what they give you this application, it's amazing. And the Vietnam War was a big help in this, you know, changing their minds because there was many limited places to get in with aircraft. You shot down too, that's really...
Yeah, I know when they land at Reagan National, they slam the brakes on pretty quick.
Yeah, and when you, if you sleep, uh, three times I've been up there, slept in a hotel, you know, where they come out. And you can hear them, but when you look out, they're way up here and they're going at an angle like this instead of like this, coming over that section. Anybody got any questions? We're over. Really?